May hardware or any other type of monitoring company that would speed up any kind of call or potentially not so much response time, but the call time or the alarms are going off in the house to wake up the people. So I don't know if that's again.
We already have, I mean already that's.
You're not requiring a electronic monitoring system. You're just doing.
The interconnected fire alarm system.
Yeah, but that's not into any other system. We're thinking if there is, you know, okay, if you want to have a unit of this size or this many people, you know, it has to be through a 24-hour monitored system. May hardware.
So the fire sprinklers issue is exceptionally complex. And so perhaps what we can take away, because I'm not sure that we can solve it here because of the complexities of it. And there are issues that are not even raised here that I am not working with. So I think perhaps we can just take a note that we're very concerned about the cost. And we want that to be strongly considered by the city council. Maybe that and we need that to be balanced with safety for the public.
Yeah, we're certainly not opposed to having everything be very safe.
And from a code standpoint, and I can just speak on John Powell building, the short McColl, we like to be consistent. And even John's told me if he gets a new building permit application or a short-term rental property, it would be commercial and you simply would be built under the building code and would be required to have a fire sprinkler system. If they say, we just want to build a single-family dwelling and it's built under the residential code, it doesn't have to have a fire sprinkler system. We like to be consistent with code application across commercial and residential properties with the codes. I've been asked for my opinion, professional opinion, based on the codes, how to classify a short-term rental and at what point it should have fire sprinkler systems. I believe based on the code, it's more than 10 people. I've had the same conversation with Valley County. They put a cap of 12 people per house. And then go through the CDP application. McColl's historically, it's many people. Our priority is doing inspection. It is in interconnected smoke detector systems, carbon monoxide detection, propane detection for life savings.
So if you're only building a house and you, and like I've heard there's a 14,000, 15,000 square foot house that was whitetail. If it's, if it's that size, is there any requirements to say you have to have a speaker?
So no, not in whitetail. So prior to, I think it was like 2007. Fire districts could require fire sprinkler systems in residential as long as it was like passed by ordinance or resolution, if I remember correctly. So when whitetail got platted, the requirement for whitetail was anything over 5,999 square feet, you'd have a fire sprinkler system. And they put it in their CCNRs. So when the legislation changed, it basically avoided that in McColl. Whitetail has continued to enforce that standard. And so there are pretty, most homes out there that are over 6,000 square feet are, do have fire sprinkler systems.
In whitetail.
In whitetail. We've also allowed it as in a lieu of water supply. So like if it's really rural and you have 10 houses that are being built and we will be in the fire code standard for water supply, they can put fire sprinkler systems in the house and not have to meet the water supply requirement. Yeah, I think people have a miss, I mean, just to educate a little bit. People I think think that the smoke detectors are tied into the sprinkler system or something. So that, because the movies have made this what it is. But that when a sprinkler goes off, they all go off. That's just not accurate at all. Each one of them has a link in it that's, once it gets to a certain temperature, it melts and that one sprinkler goes off. So in like 90% of fires nationally and sprinkled buildings, it's a one-head fire. So one sprinkler head activates. It reduces civilian deaths by 88% when they're in residential structures and reduces civilian injuries and firefighter injuries. And it's similar statistic. They do work. They are expensive. I absolutely concur with the challenge in getting contractors, particularly sprinkler contractors.
Especially after building to build or house to build.
There isn't, I mean, there isn't, I don't think you could say anything's going to be as effective as a fire sprinkler at life safety. But there are certain features with interconnected smoke detector systems that will notify everyone. And I think inspections particularly is important.
So one other issue I heard the commission talk to and it could potentially be your recommendation is did the compliance date providing a little bit more time for compliance?
Yeah.
Just based on some of the requirements that may or may not be in there. But that might just be another consideration.
Remember the date, but it's still fire suppression system. Existing homes, it's just seems pretty unreasonable cost to a owner.
And so do we.
Some homes may, you know, there's people that express concerns that they're here, they're going to do it for a while until they can get moved here. They bought something now or a few years ago, they haven't got to retirement yet. When they do, they're going to get here and it's no longer going to be a vacation. So now they put in, yeah, they got something safe there. Great. So you got a benefit, but still, I'm still concerned with the cost and what that could entail. I mean, it says in the code up there that, you know, if it practically makes it, you can't do it, which in essence almost does. Not many people are going to drop $100,000. Do something.
Or you just rent to 10 or less people. So it's not that you're barred from, it's just you can't rent to a lot more.
But it may be inhibiting their full use of the property. I don't know. That's attorney stuff.
Yeah.
That's attorney stuff. So maybe you just put, you know, that there are some concerns on that, how it'd be enacted. If it would be grandfathered, I mean, obviously anything new. If they're saying they're going to be a vacation rental, but most of the people I know when they're building the house, they don't plan on that.
Right.
They're buying one already done. They're not building their dream home to make it a vacation rental for somebody else typically. So you're going to have a break, you know, I don't know if anybody has done that though.
So then do we just make the recommendation noted? Like Bill said, that we have strong concerns regarding the financial implications of the fire suppression requirement.
That definitely, yeah.
What I'd suggest is that you, you want staff with health and safety concerns. So there's lots of, lots of good ideas to figure out. And I think we're hearing about a clear, want something safe. Don't pose necessarily to the sprinklers, but we're very concerned about the burden that would put on property owners to have to install in existing building. And certainly show period of work.
And then you, Michelle, you mentioned having, giving them extra time to get things to come into compliance. You're talking about like if they're, if the, if the, if I say it's a three-bedroom house and the assessor says, says it's a two-bedroom house and I'm not getting to where I need to get, can I still rent until I get my permit and everything filled in? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I think they can kind of further explain what compliance and the timeline that would work. Because we have to think about the fire district going out and doing 550 inspections, right? So we have to like ensure that people can still run their short-term rental businesses. At the same time, you know, it's probably for a lot of them we talked about, they're probably not going to, the ones that've nailed the health and safety, awesome, one inspection. But for a lot of them, it's probably going to require repeat inspections by the fire district to make sure that they, you know, there's the first go-around, make sure everything's in place. And then they go, yeah, all right, that's in place. So again, I think that process is, I think, I think they're going to need some time. So I think, I think we need to talk, you know, as different agencies to figure out how do we get compliance in a reasonable amount of time for this home? There's no need to ever stop them.
Right.
So, but yeah, so I think, I think just maybe a note about compliance timeline. Real, let's say, agency response and homeowner's like ability to get what, yeah, their ability to.
Well, yeah, a lot of people have the ability to get out here on the weekends, right? To do an inspection.
Right.
Reasonable compliance.
Before we wrap it up, can we look at the portion that talks about violations and the consequences for that?
It's not in the title that you're looking at. It's entitled for in the permit.
Oh, I read it.
Business license.
This is what it is an attachment.
Yeah.
Oh.
You saw it.
So we're not considering that.
Yeah.
No, but what happened, we're not considering that at all?
It's not part of what we're considering tonight.
It's not in our.
Finding and zoning, it's.
Okay, okay.
But you can comment on it.
I know.
Let me go see her.
I think that it, I mean, my list of items, kind of the key items that have the applicant or a CUP process for the two items, more dense or the bedrooms and/or higher occupancy for the bedrooms. Like see something with the kids, something, kids?
I think.
Or are we going to think that's going to be part of that?
Yes, I think they were going to be considered.
Within that.
It was, was it CUP or administrative approval?
Administrative process is what I heard for exceeding the two-bedroom occupancy limited with some standards regarding square footage, maybe children.
Right, kind of come by hand. And then expressing concern of the cost, time, I mean.
Availability of installers.
Well, I mean, that, but it just, even if you say, okay, you got three years, well, some people aren't going to have $300,000 in three years. So cost to me is the big factor.
Cost and balancing that with safety.
Yeah. And I mean, some homes, it may not be very feasible. I mean, if you've got a lot of wood interior and you got to go start cutting into that, I don't know. I mean, it's always doable, but at what cost? So it's really the cost factor on that. Was that, is there anything else that we wanted to give direction to for staff going forward?
A little more detail on compliance, reasonable time for compliance.
Okay, frame on the compliance.
And we did have a note to remove the language of using the assessor's office to determine bedrooms.
Yeah, that goes back into the application form.
Yeah.
Because I think that would potentially save time and/or arguments with staff saying, no, it's not, and then you have to get county and county doesn't have time to get out there. Yeah, I think if you can just, either they swear to it or you're going to be inspected anyway. I think those things kind of work together. I don't think going by the assessor helps anybody.
I thought we were leaving the assessor and adding the mechanism for building, for building official review and, and staff review.
I thought their application is just going to require a floor plan and they're going to sign off on the bedroom.
I thought, I think that it is, the permit application requires a fire inspection, but not an inspection for whether this is a bedroom or not a bedroom.
So they were going to have a.
I thought the default was the assessors with, with a process for having the building department verify the bedrooms if there is a discrepancy between what the assessor's office is showing.
Right.
I can clarify from the minutes. Nothing was formally stricken in terms of the assessor thing, but you did recommend that in the permission bedroom section and be compared somehow. This would be related to Valley County assessor bedroom definition. On inspection discrepancy, figuring out what's yourselves. But nothing strictly against, okay.
Technically, the language from the assessors or requiring data based on assessment is in the title or draft.
Okay. So I'm going to delete that from the list.
Weird. It's kind of awkward to have that be separate.
Okay, well, is there anything else? Tom, do you have anything? We haven't heard from you for a while.
Yeah, I'm here. No, I, I agree with the, the, some kind of a variance. You know, when the, when you're going through the process, you know, if there's a way to apply for a variance on, you know, if you do have a space that, kind of couch or something like that, that there's an opportunity to have that addressed.
So Tom, I do have to.
Pretty much that agreement.
Call it exceptions. We don't use the word variance.
You don't like that word?
So we, so we hear what you're saying.
Except for the CUP process, yeah. That scares them.
Okay.
You can dirty words in the.
Fair enough. But yeah, just some, some kind of mechanism to discuss. You know, so it's, so you, there is an opportunity to get around the, the cookie cutter. Yeah, and I, you know, like I said before, the carve-out for children, I don't know what that age is, you know, just some consideration there. And yeah, the fire suppression system again is, it's a complex issue. I, I do know that, I do know that the fire marshal usually has quite a bit of leeway there in deciding, in deciding those matters too. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Anybody else need to add anything or any other items of concern? Daph, have we given you enough?
That's a lot of work.
Guidance?
Yeah.
Guess, because we're not making any full recommendations. We just.
We're making a recommendation with.
With change.
With the following items and then circle back up in the city council. That highlights the spirit of the thing.
Okay. What do you want to make a motion encompasses those concept?
Sounds like a scary make a motion.
Can you say so moved?
No.
I make a motion that we accept.
Make a recommendation to this.
Regret, 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 regret to the, to the staff that they, to the, to the staff, to the council that they, that these, these particular items that we discussed tonight be presented to them for their input. Would that be good enough?
Yeah, want me to give it a shot?
I, I know, that wasn't very good, so go right ahead. I stumbled with that tremendously.
Yes, so with the addition of a summary process for the determination of bedrooms, administrative staff review process with standards for exceeding the maximum occupancy per bedroom, the, to address finding a balance between the cost of sprinklers with safety as well as evaluating reasonable compliance timelines based on agency response and homeowner ability.
You didn't have to bury me.
I second.
I agree, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, actually, you know, we probably should do a rule. Well, okay, all opposed? All right, motion carries. And with that, I believe that was the last, you have any other little thing on there, do we? There was nothing else on other?
No signs?
I can do this, I make a motion that we adjourn at 8:25.
Second.
All in favor, motion approved?
Aye.
Aye. One for, one for me or half.
Hey, here now, the motion carry, we are adjourned.